Item 4.06, Appointment of School Board Members to Advisory and Standing Committees. Prior to the organizational meeting, board members volunteered for committee appointments and are being nominated for the following advisory and standing committees. Michael Cavazos to the Career Ready Advisory Committee. Amy Chen to Special Education Advisory Committee. Amy Chen and Randy Riffle to the Student Advisory Committee. Andrea Donner and Sarah Ordigo to the Policy Committee. Andrea Donner and Sarah Ordigo to the School Liaison Committee. Michael Hoseng to School Safety Audit Committee. And Kimberly Hunley to the Mentor Teaching Program Committee. Is there any further discussion or other nominations? Without objection, nominations are closed. May I have a motion to approve the committee appointments as presented?
Madam Chair, I move to approve the agenda as presented.
Thank you, Mrs. Hunley. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Hoseng.
Mrs. Hunley.
Aye.
Mr. Hoseng.
Aye.
Mrs. Hunley.
Aye.
Mr. Riffle.
Aye.
Dr. Cavazos.
Aye.
Ms. Chen.
Aye.
Mr. Ordigo.
Aye. Can I have a motion to approve the agenda?
Madam Chair, I move to approve the agenda as presented.
Thank you, Mrs. Hunley. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Hoseng.
Mrs. Hunley.
Aye.
Mr. Riffle.
Aye.
Dr. Cavazos.
Aye.
Ms. Chen.
Aye.
Mr. Ordigo.
Aye. Can I have a motion to approve the agenda?
Madam Chair, we will start with 4.1, Appointment of Chair. In accordance with the Code of Virginia, the board must select one of its members as chair. May I have nominations for the Chair of the Board to serve for the calendar year 2025?
I nominate Sarah Ordigo to serve as Chair of the Williamsburg-James City County School Board for the 2025 calendar year.
Ms. Ordigo has been nominated. Are there any further nominations? Without objection, nominations are closed. May I have a motion to appoint Ms. Ordigo as Chair?
I move to appoint Sarah Ordigo as Chair of the Williamsburg-James City County School Board for the 2025 calendar year.
Is there a second?
A second.
Ms. Robinson, please take the vote.
Mrs. Donner.
Aye.
Mr. Hoseng.
Aye.
Mrs. Hunley.
Aye.
Mr. Riffle. Dr. Cavazos.
Aye.
Ms. Chen.
Aye.
Mrs. Ordigo.
Aye.
Congratulations, Ms. Ordigo, on serving as Board Chair for the next year. Please join me in congratulating Ms. Ordigo.
Thank you.[1101.01][1101.01](APPLAUSE). All right, we'll now move on to 4.02, Appointment of Vice Chair. May I have nominations for Vice Chair of the School Board to serve for the calendar year 2025?
I nominate Andrea Donner to serve as Vice Chair of the Williamsburg-James City County School Board for the 2025 school year.
Ms. Donner has been nominated. Are there any further nominations?
Without objection, nominations are closed. May I have a motion to appoint Ms. Donner as Vice Chair?
I move to appoint Andrea Donner as Vice Chair of the Williamsburg-James City County School Board for the 2025 school year.
Thank you, Dr. Cavazos. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Hoseng.
Dr. Cavazos.
Aye.
Ms. Chen.
Aye.
Mrs. Donner.
Aye.
Mr. Hoseng.
Aye.
Mrs. Hunley.
Aye.
Mr. Riffle.
Aye.
Mrs. Ordigo.
Aye. Congratulations, Vice Chair, Mrs. Donner. Item 4.03, Appointment of the Parliamentarian. May I have nominations for Parliamentarian of the School Board to serve for calendar year 2025?
Madam Chair, I nominate, pardon me, Kimberly Hunley to serve as Parliamentarian of the Williamsburg-James City County School Board for the 2025 calendar year. Thank you, Mr. Hoseng. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Riffle.
Mr. Hoseng.
Aye.
Mrs. Hunley.
Aye.
Mr. Riffle.
Aye.
Dr. Cavazos.
Aye.
Ms. Chen.
Aye.
Mrs. Donner.
Aye.
Mrs. Ordigo.
Aye. Item 4.04, Appointment of the Clerk and Deputy Clerk. In accordance with Section 22.1-76 of the Code of Virginia, it is recommended that Ms. Beth Aller be appointed Clerk and Ms. Starr Robinson be appointed Deputy Clerk of the Williamsburg-James City County School Board through 2025. May I have a motion?
I move that the School Board appoint Ms. Beth Aller as Clerk and Ms. Starr Robinson as Deputy Clerk of the Williamsburg-James City County School Board for calendar year 2025.
Thank you, Ms. Chen. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Riffle.
Ms. Chen.
Aye.
Mrs. Donner.
Aye.
Mr. Hoseng.
Aye.
Mrs. Hunley.
Aye.
Mr. Riffle.
Aye.
Dr. Cavazos.
Aye.
Mrs. Ordigo.
Aye. Item 4.05, Appointment of Superintendent's Designee. In accordance with Section 22.1-76 of the Code of Virginia, it is recommended that Dr. Daniel Kever, Deputy Superintendent, be designated to attend meetings of the School Board in the absence or inability of the Superintendent to attend through July 31, 2025, and Dr. Kathy Worley be designated to attend meetings of the School Board in the absence or inability of the Superintendent to attend from February 1 through December 31, 2025.
Madam Chair, I think it's supposed to say January in the written piece, to attend through January 31, 2025. It's wrong on the script.
My apologies.
For Dr. Worley, right?
Yeah, I will, I'll start over. It is recommended that Dr. Daniel Kever, Deputy Superintendent, be designated to attend meetings of the School Board in the absence or inability of the Superintendent through January 31, 2025, and Dr. Kathy Worley be designated to attend meetings of the School Board in the absence or inability of the Superintendent to attend from February 1 through December 31 of 2025. May I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I move that the School Board appoint Dr. Daniel Kever, Deputy Superintendent, to serve as Superintendent's Designee through January 31, 2025, and Dr. Kathy Worley to serve as the Superintendent Designee from February 1 through December 31, 2025.
Thank you, Mr. Riffle. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Hoseng.
Mr. Riffle.
Aye.
Dr. Cavazos.
Aye.
Ms. Chen.
Aye.
Mrs. Donner.
Aye.
Mr. Hoseng.
Aye.
Mrs. Hunley.
Aye.
Mrs. Ordigo.
Aye. Item 4.06, Appointment of School Board Members to Advisory and Standing Committees. Prior to the organizational meeting, board members volunteered for committee appointments and are being nominated for the following advisory and standing committees. Dr. Cavazos to the Career Ready Advisory Committee. Amy Chen to Special Education Advisory Committee. Amy Chen and Randy Riffle to the Student Advisory Committee. Andrea Donner and Sarah Ordigo to the Policy Committee. Andrea Donner and Sarah Ordigo to School Liaison Committee. Michael Hoseng to School Safety Audit Committee. And Kimberly Hunley to the Mentor Teaching Program Committee. Is there any further discussion or other nominations? Without objection, nominations are closed. May I have a motion to approve the committee appointments as presented?
Madam Chair, I move to appoint Daniel Cavazos to serve on the Career Ready Advisory Committee. Amy Chen to serve on the Special Education Advisory Committee. Amy Chen and Randy Riffle to serve on the Student Advisory Committee. Andrea Donner and Sarah Ordigo to serve on the Policy Committee. Andrea Donner and Sarah Ordigo to serve on the School Liaison Committee. Michael Hoseng to the School Safety Audit Committee. And Kimberly Hunley, myself, to the Mentor Teaching Program Committee for the calendar year 2025.
Thank you, Mrs. Hunley. Is there a second?
A second.
Thank you, Mr. Riffle.
Mrs. Hunley.
Aye.
Mr. Riffle.
Aye.
Dr. Cavazos.
Aye.
Ms. Chen.
Aye.
Mrs. Donner.
Aye.
Mr. Hoseng.
Aye.
Mrs. Ordigo.
Aye. Item 4.07, Appointment of School Board Member to Serve on the New Horizons Board of Trustees. May I have nominations for a member to serve on the New Horizons Board of Trustees?
I nominate Michael Hoseng to serve on the New Horizons Board of Trustees for calendar year 2025.
Mr. Hoseng has been nominated. Are there any further nominations? Without objection, nominations are closed. May I have a motion to appoint Michael Hoseng to serve as trustee?
I move to appoint Michael Hoseng to serve on the New Horizons Board of Trustees for calendar year 2025.
Thank you, Ms. Chen. Is there a second?
A second, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Riffle.
Ms. Chen.
Aye.
Mrs. Donner.
Aye.
Mr. Hoseng.
Aye.
Mrs. Hunley.
Aye.
Mr. Riffle.
Aye.
Dr. Cavazos.
Aye.
Mrs. Ordigo.
Aye. Item 4.08, Appointment of School Board Member to Serve on the Heretta Education Advisory Committee. May I have nominations for a member to serve on the Hampton Roads Educational Telecommunications Association Educational Advisory Committee?
I nominate Randy Riffle to serve on the Heretta Educational Advisory Committee for calendar year 2025.
Mr. Riffle has been nominated. Are there any further nominations? Without objection, nominations are closed. May I have a motion to appoint Randy Riffle to serve on the committee?
I move to appoint Randy Riffle to serve on the Heretta Educational Advisory Committee for calendar year 2025.
Thank you, Mrs. Donner. Is there a second?
A second.
Thank you, Ms. Chen.
Mrs. Donner.
Aye.
Mr. Hoseng.
Aye.
Mrs. Hunley.
Aye.
Mr. Riffle.
Aye.
Dr. Cavazos.
Aye.
Ms. Chen.
Aye.
Mrs. Ordigo.
Aye. And item 4.09, Approval of Regular School Board Meeting Dates for 2025. The State Code of Virginia, Section 22.1-72, reads, "Each school board shall hold its annual organizational meeting for the purpose of establishing its regular meeting schedule for the ensuing year." May I have a motion to approve?
Madam Chair, I move to approve the regular school board meeting dates for 2025 as presented.
Thank you, Mr. Riffle. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Hoseng.
Mr. Riffle.
Aye.
Dr. Cavazos.
Aye.
Ms. Chen.
Aye.
Mrs. Donner.
Aye.
Mr. Hoseng.
Aye.
Mrs. Hunley.
Aye.
Mrs. Ordigo.
Aye. And I would like to also acknowledge Mrs. Kimberly Hunley has volunteered to serve as a school board representative on the WJCC Schools Foundation Board for calendar year 2025. So thank you for that, Mrs. Hunley. And now we will move on to announcements and superintendent's report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I want to begin by wishing our staff, families, and community a happy new year. I hope everyone had a relaxing and enjoyable winter break, and a safe break extension with our snow days this week as well. We're excited to be back together again and have the new year underway. There's no better time than the new year to consider new opportunities to serve our community. Perspective support employees are encouraged to walk into WJCC School Central Office on Wednesday, January 15, from 2:00 p.m. to 5:00 p.m. to learn about available support positions. Apply, interview, and receive a conditional job offer all in one visit. Our human resources team is extremely busy, not just hiring for current vacancies, but also planning for the 2025-26 school year. Encourage family, friends, and neighbors to take the first steps to join our wonderful team next year by coming to our job fair Monday, January 27, from 9:00 to 11:30, or from 4:00 to 6:00 p.m. at Warhol High School. Help spread the word. We have onsite interviews and job offers to well-qualified candidates. Thank you, Madam Chair. That concludes my short report for this evening.
Thank you, Dr. Heron. All right, we'll move on to proposed agenda items. Item 6.01, Review the SBA Code of Conduct for School Board Members. This is our own code of conduct, so...
It's been reviewed.
You just review it. And we sign it and vote on it next time?
Right.
Yep. So please review. Item 6.02, Review the Right-of-Way Agreement and Request for Granting of a Permanent Easement at the Bright Beginning South Campus.
Mr. Snipes will present this item.
Good evening, School Board Chair, School Board Members, and Dr. Heron. Tonight's proposed agenda item is the review of the Right-of-Way Agreement and request for granting for a permanent easement at the Bright Beginning South Campus. The support priority number four of the Elevate 28 Plan is being brought for your consideration. is being brought for your consideration and subsequent award tonight. The easement will allow Dominion Energy slash Virginia Electric Power Company the perpetual right and privilege and exclusive easement over, under, through, and upon, above, and across the Bright Beginning Southbound Campus. The Superintendent recommends that the Board's, the School Board review the Right-of-Way Agreement and request for permanent easement at the Bright Beginning South Campus, and be prepared to vote tonight, January ninth, 2025. Have any questions?
Okay, Mr. Snipes, any questions? Okay. Uh, next we will go to six point zero three, Review Purchase Request of UKG Time Clock Terminals.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Mr. Landers will present this item this evening.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Members of the Board and Dr. Heron. This agenda item requests the Board review the purchase request and associated budget transfer for time clock terminals to be considered for approval at the next Board Meeting. Division currently utilizes the NovaTime system provided by Andrews Technology for timekeeping for non-exempt staff. This system, as well as several of the existing timekeeping terminals, are now sunsetting and is being replaced by a new system, UKG. There will be no cost to the Division for migrating to the new UKG system with Andrews. However, new timekeeping terminals for staff to use in order to track their hours are required. The Division currently has forty-one terminals located throughout the Division. The requested purchase will provide forty-one in-touch proximity terminals for a cost of one hundred eighteen thousand four hundred ninety dollars, programming of the terminals at a cost of twelve thousand three hundred dollars, two months' maintenance fee at six thousand one hundred eighty dollars, for a total purchase price of one hundred thirty-six thousand nine hundred and seventy dollars. The purchase will allow the Division to work with Andrews Technology to begin installation and implementation during the spring of this year with the target of launch of July first, to be ready for the next school year. The purchase will be made using the TIPS USA contract with Andrews, and a budget transfer is requested from instructional salaries to the Technology Cost Center to support the purchase. Ongoing maintenance costs for the system are already currently budgeted each year within the Technology Operating Budget Cost Center. Thank you, and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Landers, are there any questions from the Board? Doesn't look like it.
Thank you.
Alright, we'll move on to, um, policies.
Dr. Kiefer, um, I think is going to present the, the final bunch of policies for this school year as we've actually reached our, our maximum of mind, or the ones that want, want to review during this year. So, Dr. Kiefer, over to you.
Thank you, Dr. Heron, good evening, Board Members. Uh, Agenda Item seven point zero one is a review of Policy AFA, the Evaluation of School Board Operational Procedures. This policy, we are not recommending any changes whatsoever. Uh, it's simply a matter of the Board indicating that it is reviewed this policy within the five-year required cycle.
Okay, should be pretty straightforward. Alright.
Agenda Item seven point zero two, Review Revisions to Policy BG slash GBD. Uh, this is a dual-coded policy entitled Board-Staff Communications. And this particular policy lines ten and eleven have changed in terms of the, the name of the regulation, just to make it flow a little bit better. And we also made that similar change at the bottom under the cross-references.
Alright. Any questions? Nope.
Policy, excuse me, Agenda Item seven point zero three, Review Revisions to Policy GA, Employee Conduct. Uh, you may recall that we recently reviewed GA. We did that in, excuse me, we revised GA in March of 2024. Uh, we felt like at that time, the language was on point, and the Attorney had agreed with us. At the same time, we went through another policy, uh, that was updated just recently by the Board, GCDA. And it was in that review that the Attorney suggested to us that we needed to add lines one twenty-seven through one twenty-eight. Uh, so, we are bringing back GA to you in relation to what legal guidance has suggested with a different revision that we had done.
Okay, Mr. Hoseng?
I just have a question with this one, and it's going to relate to some other, of the policies that, that you're looking at right now.
Yes, sir.
And it's just, it may just be semantics. Um, but looking for this one, for example, on line one oh seven, it talks about School Board Employees. Do, doesn't the School Board only have really one employee? And should it be school district employees, or am I just reading too much into the language there? And, 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 and this, I've got the same issue, like I said, for four, or for four different policies today. So, it may just be nothing, but I just want to make sure that we're doing everything correctly.
Appropriately, right, well, and, so, from the legal sufficiency standpoint, our Attorney has signed off on it. The Board does, through personnel actions, approve recommendations of the Superintendent for employment. So, while the Superintendent is the, uh, direct, uh, employee of the School Board, the, the School Board does, in essence, employ the rest of the School Division employees.
And, and I completely agree with you on that, but we've also been told that we, the School Board has one employee, and that's the Superintendent. So, I just wanted to make sure that, I guess that's clear, that, what
Right, I think-
I'm dealing with the policies.
Chain of command-
You delegate the responsibility, right.
That's, that's fine, I just want to make sure that that was, I saw that, and I just want to make sure that-
Yes, sir.
I had no issues with that.
Thank you, good question.
Okay, anything else? Alright, we can move on.
Yes, uh, Agenda Item seven point zero four, Review Revisions to Policy GDQ, Drug and Alcohol Testing for Motive Motor Vehicle Operators. In this particular policy, we've made several of, several adjustments. Uh, for instance, on line ten, we changed the word bus to division motor vehicle, uh, because we are not simply transporting students by way of bus any longer. Uh, there are additions to line fourteen and twenty-three, uh, regarding, um, some specifics that were recommended to us by the Attorney. Uh, looking at the green sheet. Legal counsel also advised that on lines one oh through, one oh four through one oh seven, that we add language regarding the requirement for us to distribute educational materials, um, to CDL holders around not utilizing drugs and alcohol if you're driving a motor vehicle.
Sounds like a good idea.
Don't read it while you're driving.
Alright, I'm not seeing any questions, so, I'll move on.
Agenda Item seven point zero five, A Policy Revision for Policy IE, Moment of Silence. Virginia State Code, uh, was changed, and the State Code revision indicates that there will be a minute of silence in school on a daily basis. Uh, and we are revising our policy to ensure alignment with code. Uh, I, I do want to mention that both Dr. Worley and Mr. Walker will be working with school principals as we begin to utilize and, and, um, adhere to this policy. You've probably been in schools during the moment of silence. That moment will now be almost sixty moments, in terms of sixty seconds. Uh, it will take us a little bit of time, I think, in order to make that transition, uh, but we do want to be in alignment with code.
Okay, any questions? Okay.
Seven point zero six, Review Revisions to Policy KB, Public Information. Get this one in front of me, we made just very minor revision suggestions to this particular policy. Uh, the content is, is not being recommended for revision.
Okay.
PolicyKF, which is Agenda Item seven point zero seven. Uh, the section title has been corrected, uh, the cross-references have been updated. Other minor changes in terms of shifting from instructional program or curriculum to educational mission. Those are the recommended revisions.
Any questions?
Hearing none. Seven, seven point zero eight, KGA, Sales and Solicitation in Schools. Uh, the only recommendation to this particular, there just a couple relative to wording changes, so, we changed on line one from policy to code. Uh, we redid the KK cross-reference, uh, to the more, the appropriate title, School Visitors versus Visitors to the Schools.
Okay.
KGB, uh, Public Conduct on School Property is Agenda Item seven point zero nine. The lines that are being removed from twenty-five through thirty-eight, um, from our perspective, are redundant because there is a policy in place that covers use of tobacco products and nicotine and vapor product, vaping products being, um, prohibited on campus. We called that out in twenty-two through twenty-three, but do not feel like twenty-five through thirty-eight are necessary any longer. Uh, we added in the word designee on line forty-one, uh, because in some cases, it would be an assistant principal or a member of the school staff that would make that report, uh, and we'd want that report to happen straight away, and the principal may simply not be there at that very instance.
Okay.
Moving to seven-ten, Review Revisions to Policy KH, Public Gifts to Schools. Section title has been corrected, uh, we updated to align the policy more closely with the VSPA model policy. Uh, you'll see this sort of in the removal of lines sixteen through eighteen, and some of the additional language, line twenty-three through twenty-four. Our legal counsel advised that we needed to add line thirty and thirty-one as it reflects back to code and the idea of a public gift to school, and then a regulation, um, the regulation is created in order for us to lay out how that process works.
Any questions, Mr. Riffle?
Oh, so, we will accept, we can still accept public gifts, right? It just, now it's not... And the School Board's power?
It's a question, if-
We can still accept, like, say someone wants to donate playground equipment, or like, a gift to purchase asphalt, or whatever, you know?
There, there's a, there's a process on-
There is a process, and, and now, the School Board has authorized, currently, the School Board has authorized a Superintendent or Superintendent's Designee to accept those gifts and donations. In this policy revision, you are further specifying that there is a regulation in place that lays that out.
Thank you.
You're welcome. I'm sorry?
I know it was a struggle in the past, like, BTA, like, people like, I want to donate cement for the playground, or whatever, you know, I, I heard it from two principals recently, and I was like, I believe there's a revision to this policy, so-
Just direct them to miss you, and she'll take care of them.
Like, they're like, I can't do anything about it, thank you.
Okay.
Let's see, Advertising in Schools, Agenda Item seven-eleven, Review Revisions to Policy KJ, Advertising in Schools. Uh, this particular policy has been in place. We're bringing it forward this evening for some suggested revisions as a result of some feedback that we have received specifically from our secondary schools around the desire to be able to potentially capitalize on, um, local businesses that may wish to advertise, uh, in school gyms or at school events, or utilization of fields. So, we have developed a policy that would allow that to occur. Uh, there is some oversight provided through this policy, the Department of School Leadership, especially related to Cooley Field. Uh, and then there is a corresponding regulation that details how that determination can be made in terms of accepting those advertisements.
Um, I see we didn't include auxiliary gyms, is there a reason why we didn't specify auxiliary gyms? It says primary gyms, but not auxiliary, and we have-
Yes, sir, we, in conversation with school principals and athletic directors, most of our, most if not all of our athletic competitions are happening in our main gyms and not auxiliary gyms. So, we felt like that was most appropriate.
Fair enough, I just wanted to ask, thank you.
Okay.
KL, which is Agenda Item seven-twelve, Public Concerns and Complaints. Uh, this policy is being revised based on the five-year window. Uh, we've adjusted language to be more streamlined and aligned with the VSPA model. Uh, legal and cross-references were updated. Uh, specifically, there were a number of policy references at the bottom that needed to be revised.
Any questions? Moving on.
AMA, which is seven thirteen, Relations with Parent Organizations. Adding in the words "that improve educational opportunities", updated the cross-references at the bottom of the policy.
Okay.
And finally, seven fourteen, Review, Review Revisions to KQ, Commercial Promotional and Corporate Sponsorships and Partnerships. From time to time, there are, um, desires for commercial and corporate sponsorships and partnerships. Uh, this particular policy needed some updating and revision. For instance, lines eighty-one through eighty-seven were added in order to help provide us some, uh, legal coverage, specifically from our Attorney recommended that. We felt like the rest of the policy revisions were, um, in line with, with other changes we've made along the way.
Alright. Doesn't look like there are any questions or concerns with that one either.
Madam Chair, I'm, I'm pleased that we have gone through all of the twenty-four, twenty-five policies and updated all of the policies that were overdue. Uh, we will, as necessary, in the next few months, bring policies forward if there need to be revisions, but we, we may put a little bit of a pause on, on policy updates unless absolutely necessary.
That's a bummer, since we just-
We will do our best then to bring some back in February.
Thank you, Dr. Kiefer, and thank you for all your work plowing through all those and getting us, uh, in compliance with our five-year review. So, those will all be on a consent agenda. Next time, alright, we'll move on to action items. Eight point zero one, Approval of Personnel Actions.
Madam Chair, I move to approve personnel actions as presented.
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Hunley, thank you, Mr. Hoseng.
Mrs. Hunley?
Aye.
Mr. Riffle?
Aye.
Dr. Cavazos?
Aye.
Ms. Chen?
Aye.
Mrs. Donner?
Aye.
Mr. Hoseng?
Aye.
Mrs. Ortigo?
Aye. Item eight point zero two, Approval of Minutes from December tenth, twenty twenty-four meeting.
Madam Chair, I move to approve the minutes from the eighth, tenth, twenty twenty-four as presented.
Thank you, Mr. Riffle.
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Hunley.
Mr. Riffle?
Aye.
Dr. Cavazos?
Aye.
Ms. Chen?
Aye.
Mrs. Donner?
Aye.
Mr. Hoseng?
Aye.
Mrs. Hunley?
Aye.
Mrs. Ortigo?
Aye. Eight point zero three, Approval of Resolution R-125, Principal Appreciation Week.
Madam Chair, I move to approve Resolution R-125, uh, Principal Appreciation Week as presented.
Thank you, Ms. Chen, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Riffle.
Ms. Chen?
Aye.
Mrs. Donner?
Aye.
Mr. Hoseng?
Aye.
Mrs. Hunley?
Aye.
Mr. Riffle?
Aye.
Dr. Cavazos?
Aye.
Mrs. Ortigo?
Aye. Eight point zero four, Approval of the Right-of-Way Agreement and Request for Granting of a Permanent Easement at the Bright Beginning South Campus, is there a motion?
Madam Chair, I move to approve the Right-of-Way Agreement and Request for Granting of a Permanent Easement at the Bright Beginning South Campus to Virginia Elec- Electric and Power Company, um, doing business as Dominion Energy Virginia as presented.
Thank you, Mrs. Hunley, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Hoseng.
Mrs. Hunley?
Aye.
Mr. Riffle?
Aye.
Cavazos?
Aye.
Ms. Chen?
Aye.
Mrs. Donner?
Aye.
Mr. Hoseng?
Aye.
Mrs. Ortigo?
Aye. And item eight point zero five, Approval of Decision Regarding Student Case Number Two-Four-Two-Five dash Zero-Four-Three.
Madam Chair, I move to uphold the Superintendent's recommendation for expulsion in student discipline case two-Four-Two-Five dash Zero-Four-Three.
Thank you, Mrs. Donner, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Hunley.
Mrs. Donner?
Aye.
Mr. Hosang?
Aye.
Ms. Henley?
Aye.
Mr. Riffle?
Aye.
Dr. Cavazos?
Aye.
Ms. Chen?
Aye.
Mrs. Ortago?
Aye.
All right, we are already at board member comments. Mr. Riffle, would you like to kick it off?
Sure. Um, not much to say. I've already said what I wanted to say during the other meeting, one of the three other meetings we had today, so. Um, yeah, thanks for hanging on for season two, episode one, you know, or whatever you want to call it.
All right.
Um, but yeah, the general somebody's meeting and they'll do that on Monday. The State of Commonwealth has been moved to Monday as well. Um, and the chambers are the exact same way they were last year, even though a couple of special elections, but that's about it. I mean, that's, you know, simply, there's no committees yet. I'll get some bills for y'all to have fun and talk about. Um, the VSB A will probably put out some stuff too about what they are liking, what they're not, so I'll bring that to you. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Riffle. Uh, Mr. Hosang?
Um, I just want to quickly say I hope the students enjoyed the snow day earlier this week. I know the students in my development definitely did, so that was, it was great to hear them, uh, enjoying themselves. Uh, I just want to give you a, a quick update. We had a New Horizons meeting, um, in December last year. Uh, we received a presentation by the Center for Apprenticeship and Adult Training. Um, they discussed the partnerships that they have, uh, with multiple local agencies and companies, uh, to train and employ individuals. Uh, we also, um, received a presentation from a student who recently, uh, graduated from the new cybersecurity course. Um, uh, he spoke to the board regarding his training and the passing of the, uh, I think, I believe he received two different, uh, certification, um, through that training. Um, so that was, uh, great to, uh, hear from him. Uh, we reviewed the, oh, that program, I'm sorry, was also awarded the twenty twenty-four Coastal Virginia winner um, of the Best of the Reader's Choice Awards. Uh, so it was, uh, great to have that presentation, uh, from them. Uh, we approved the FY twenty twenty-six budget timeline. Uh, and so we will be discussing the issues and hopefully getting, um, budget numbers, uh, to, um, the appropriate schools, uh, as soon as we can. Um, we reviewed the governor's school program motto, uh, which is a listing of the courses that they're offering um, and, and the different areas, uh, so we reviewed that. And we also finally approved the cell phone policy, uh, when it was back January first.
Great. Is that it?
That's it.
Thank you, Mr. Hosang. Mrs. Henley?
So, talking about that snow, I have to eat crow because on Saturday I was like, what is all that white stuff in the road? And it was salt. And so my phone kept, people kept saying, are we closing school? And I said, WJCC will never close till they see a snowflake. And they came out with the closing before we saw a snowflake. Well, today I'm driving to this meeting. I'm like, what is all that white stuff? Again, so they have salted the roads, so you know what that means. You're gonna have another, have lots more excitement, hopefully in your neighborhood. Um, secondly, this morning, we were able to go to, um, the swearing-in ceremony, um, of our city council members, Mr. Dent, Ms. Ramsey, and Mrs. Williams. And, um, I'm just excited because, you know, our hashtag always says, we are WJCC, which sounds so much better than we are WC. So congratulations to them.
Thank you, Mrs. Henley. Ms. Chen?
Um, I also, um, wanted to say congratulations, uh, to, um, Pat Dent, Barb Ramsey, and Ayanna Williams, um, and then to the other school board members this morning who joined us at the city council, uh, swearing-in ceremony. Um, it was, it was a great history-making swearing-in ceremony. Um, and then also, um, just wanted to say that I'm looking forward to another year of serving on the Student Advisory Committee with, um, Mr. Riffle and also on the, um, Special Education Advisory Committee. Um, and then the last thing is, um, just for all the s- board members to save the date. We do have a date for the exceptional games, uh, so April twenty-fifth and hoping that we could all be there. Um, so that was something that we talked about at the meeting yesterday was our first, uh, Special Education Advisory Committee. So that was something that they were excited about. Um, so yeah, just wanted to share that.
Thank you, Ms. Chen. Dr. Cavazos?
Well, I really don't have much to say tonight, except I'm really glad that, uh, we've got the same governing board. Those are good people and they'll lead us through the next year. I just hope we can find the funds to begin lacrosse. This is since twenty eighteen, we've been talking about this. I'm hoping, I'm hoping, really, this is the year we get this across the finish line. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Cavazos. Mrs. Donner?
Um, I'd also like to congratulate the Williamsburg City Council and, um, Mayor Pond and Vice Mayor Dent for being re-elected into those two positions. I think as we have, um, stability across our, our three bodies, that is a wonderful thing as we move forward. Um, I would also like to go back to December and say, elementary school music teachers are a special gift to the world. I had the opportunity to go to one of the, um, concerts and it is amazing the way that they teach those students strings, choir, um, and band. Um, and so they are excited and you could just see the joy and the passion they have as their students are what they call the beginning sounds concert. And I appreciate that they were thirty minutes on the dot. Uh, but they just want to give a shout out to all of our, all of our music teachers, but especially those in elementary school that get them primed for our middle school and high school. When you hear them at our graduations, you're like, wow, I can't believe they started there and ended there. So that's all my comments.
Thank you, Mrs. Donner. Um, I won't, uh, say much either. It's, it's been a long day. But, um, Happy New Year officially to everyone. Welcome, welcome back. Uh, twenty twenty-five is going to be a very, uh, monumentous year for our, us, for our school division, for our board. Um, we have a lot going on in the next few months. Um, and of course, we're not quite there yet, but we'll save it for next time. These are our final weeks with Dr. Heron, which, um, we will enjoy till the thirty-first. Um, and yeah, I'm, I'm grateful for, uh, everyone on this board. Everyone, um, decided, uh, to maintain their positions, um, and, and committee positions, board positions, uh, because we felt mainly that continuity, um, was very crucial with everything else around us potentially changing, um, board stability is important. So that was the main reason be- behind all of that. And so we, we will look forward to continuing to work together well as a team with all of the big decisions ahead of us. Um, and as always, thank you to staff and everything that went into putting tonight on and, and all the, especially the budget process, that's such a heavy lift. So we look forward to the next few weeks. And we've got some upcoming meetings. This is Special Education Advisory Committee, but that already happened, right? Because this was, this meeting was supposed to be on the seventh, so that happened yesterday on the eighth. Um, annual Martin Luther King Junior Actso Award Luncheon is on Sunday, the twelfth at three PM, Williamsburg Hellenic Center in Williamsburg. Um, I think we're all invited, so I'm sure a number of us will be there. Um, Career Ready Advisory Committee, uh, is on January twenty-second, twenty-five at three thirty PM in room three hundred of the annex. And the VSB A Capitol Conference, um, begins on January twenty-seventh. Um, some of us may be there on the twenty-sixth as well, but it begins at, uh, one PM at the Hilton in Richmond Downtown in Richmond, Virginia, and I think most of us are attending that as well. Um, upcoming meetings. We have another fun budget work session on the twenty-first of January at four thirty PM here in room three hundred of the annex. Um, that will be followed by closed session at six PM, also in room three hundred of the annex. And that will be followed by a regular meeting with a pre-budget public hearing, also January twenty-first at six thirty PM in the James Blair Middle School Gymnasium. We will then have a special call meeting on January thirtieth at eleven forty-five AM in room three hundred of the annex. Yeah, School Board Central Office. Um, and on February fourth, we will begin with closed session at four PM in room three hundred of the annex, followed by work session and action items, also on the fourth, at four thirty PM here in room three hundred of the annex. And with that, our agenda items are set for our next regular meeting and we are adjourned.